Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 1st, 2021 Mount Vernon School Board meeting. Did we say to pledge?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Say to pledge.
We haven't done that traditionally on the Zoom because it was awkward. If you like.
Okay, roll call.
All right. Trustee Sorensen.
Present.
Trustee Red.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist.
Present.
Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Trustee Patterson. Trustee McOwen. Trustee White.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Saunders.
Present.
A quorum is present.
At this time, we will go into executive session to discuss the.
Employment history. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Rick, I'm fine.
The employment history of a particular person or persons.
And we will return in approximately.
Fifteen.
Let's say thirty.
All right. You want to. Is there a second link for this, Rick?
No, we'll kick it, we'll ask Jeff and I to remove people to the waiting room and you'll use this link.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We need a motion and a second, Madam President.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries, the board stands in recess and executive session.
Rick, it's still.
To return to public session?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Do we have any communications from?
There are no communications this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have a superintendent's report?
Ma'am.
You said no?
No.
Do we have any committee reports?
Well, I have an update.
I just have to make one statement. We have a special education meeting on September 11th, from ten to two. It's going to be at, I believe.
STEAM?
STEAM?
Is it STEAM?
Is it STEAM? Yes, at the STEAM. From, yeah, from ten to two. And we're going to have less speakers and it's going to be all day. Mr. Paul, would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, it's the Special Education Forum. Right now, it is scheduled for September 11th, 10:30 a.m. It'll begin with a breakfast reception in the STEAM cafeteria, the STEAM Academy's cafeteria. Then we will proceed to a whole group forum where we'll be providing updates and the new vision for the Special Education Department. Once that whole group forum is over, we will be breaking, we will allow parents to visit breakout rooms. And they will be able to, you know, gain knowledge and resources on a very topic related to special education and their students' programming and services and such. And it's going to commence at about 2:00 p.m.
Okay, and so how have we informed the public of what's going on?
There's a save the date out and we are in the process of finalizing the formal invitation. And we are meeting as a subcommittee tomorrow afternoon, right?
Yes.
Yeah, to kind of iron out some of the details about the event.
All right, thank you. That's all for my committee report. Does anyone else have anything?
I can only mention that recently, you know, I was working with Michael Policchio regarding the building survey reports. We're still moving forward with that. Mike is helping out a lot, getting everything together. And we're going to be moving forward with reviewing those. And hopefully, we'll be back with some new information in the next few meetings coming up.
Are we going to get a copy of the BCS?
You already know. You already know. I'm pushing, pressing, and Mike can tell you right now.
Thank you. Thank you, just at that.
Mashing up his email.
Okay. Anything else? Any other committee reports?
Go ahead, TJ.
So I have an update about Williams Elementary. Everyone knows that I'm working along with Michael Policchio and the library. The furniture right now for the library is on back order. As we know, because of COVID, that there's been a backlog and back order of many different things. But soon as the furniture gets there, we'll let everyone know. Thank you.
Do they have furniture right now?
Yeah, but they have.
You didn't discard what they had, right?
No, they didn't discard what they have, but classroom furniture is different from library furniture. If we're going to do it right, we're going to do it right.
Do they have, they have library furniture, correct?
No, they never really had library furniture, so.
They don't have library furniture, they have classroom furniture in there. Classroom furniture looks totally different from library furniture.
Okay, but they have something.
They're right now.
Sit on, correct?
Right, there's classroom furniture in there right now. And they're waiting for the order of the library furniture to be delivered. But it's on backlog because of COVID and things being at a standstill.
Wonderful, what's the ETA on that, do you know?
Early October, the first week of October, it should be. And so, Madam President, the library has been renovated. It's a beautiful space.
I was there. All right, any other committee reports?
Yeah. Two things. Audit Committee, I met with, I didn't give the update last time because time was short, but I'll be brief. I met with Mr. Silver and Mr. Tobin about what's going on in audit. We are working on our main audit. It's been very hard, everyone's had to chip in. Amy has been great. Bo Cees has helped because of the, you know, with Saji gone. But that's moving along and we plan to commence a special ed audit in October. And I will circle back with you to make sure we are, you know, have our ducks in a row as to what we want to look into. Make sure. On communications, we had an inaugural meeting of the committee yesterday. We are minus, so Kim Smith and Gail White-Wallace were there and Mr. McCormick. And I'm very excited that Sandra O'Connor, who's one of our parent liaisons, is going to join the committee as well, which is really helpful since she is definitely doing a lot of communicating with parents in the community. So we set some priorities in motion. And I will be sent, sending the notes from that committee meeting probably by Friday.
So, so is there any updates on the Parent Resource Center?
There's a meeting tomorrow, Friday morning at 10 o'clock. Okay. BC, which is going to be with initial stakeholders. Do you want to say something about that, BC, or it's just a meeting at 10 o'clock Friday, right? Or is it 11 o'clock? I think it's 10 o'clock.
I'm invited to that meeting, I just wanted to know if there was any other updates. Okay.
That's it.
Okay, sounds good. Any other committee reports? So we want to move on to the HR resolution.
In a motion to approve HR 6.1, the approval of Human Resources Memorandum 42A certified and 42B non-certified dated September 1st, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Miller, trustee Turnquist.
We still have technology links in here. Are we supposed to have those in here?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I, motion.
We have a motion and a second, Madam President. Do you want to call for questions or comments?
Questions or comments? I think I just asked a question. Any other questions?
Are we voting on the entire resolution or individual personnel?
On the entire resolution.
Because I have a person, I have a problem with the personnel, so.
Then you might need to abstain.
Oh, just abstain, that's okay.
Okey dokey.
Okay, so you went abstaining?
Yes.
We haven't voted yet, we haven't asked for the vote yet.
No, I'll take the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain. Abstain.
I see trustee Sorensen abstained and trustee Red abstained.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep, correct.
Motion carries. We need a motion to approve the appointment of technology links, Human Resources Resolution 6.2.
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Miller, second.
Second.
Trustee Saunders. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Human Resources Number 6.3, the approval to establish temporary September 1 through, September 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, pay for certified and uncertified substitutes.
Motion. Motion. Second.
Saunders and trustee White.
Mike, I have one question. The question is for, I guess it's for Ms. Tigs, and that is, do we prioritize certified subs over uncertified subs? Like, like if we have a list of subs that we've approved, do we, do we prefer the certified? Do, you know, how does that work? Just curious.
Yes, we never have enough certified working on any given day that there's a distinction. The distinction is made that a not, an uncertified or a non-certified substitute may only work a maximum of forty days within a school year. Whereas a certified substitute can work an unlimited number of days. If it's long-term absence that we're aware of, where a teacher might be out for a week or two, the principal typically calls a certified sub and to set it up. And it's usually a retired teacher from the district if we know that a teacher will be out for two or three weeks or a month. So when it's a long-term continuous absence, it's usually a certified sub.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. You know, motion to approve the Business Office Memorandum Number 67 dated seven point, dated September 1st, 2021, please.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders. Trustee Sorensen. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Business Office 7.2, awarding bid number 21-22-02 for student athletic and field trip transportation.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders.
Second.
Trustee White, okay. Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion to approve 7.3, the secret resolution for district-wide window repairs.
I have a question.
We, I'm sorry, we need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders. Do you have a second?
Second.
Trustee Red. All right, questions?
Yes, I just have a question. Are they repairing all the windows in every school?
That's what it says. And my question, yeah, it says they're going to repair all the windows in every school because it's like an emergency because of COVID. I want to know, so is this going to go out to bid and?
Right.
How, who?
Did they give a name?
So, Michael, Michael, let me take the first part of this. Sure. So by declaring this an emergency, we do not have to go out to bid. And it makes us eligible for state aid. Where if we did not declare this an emergency, we would have to have had it already voted as part of the budget back in March. But we didn't know that we were going to need these repairs so fast. We thought we could stagger them over a longer period of time. So this enables us to do whatever we want to do, submit everything to the state after it's done and get state aid on it.
How many windows? How many windows?
Michael?
So there's five schools in this particular part of the project. And it's every window in all of those five schools. What happens is window repair system is the industry standard. They have a proprietary balance called a Turbo 2. So each window in every building that we've done so far, and we've done five as well, so this is, this will be six through 10. What happens is each window is tested with weight. So each window has an individual weight adjustment on, on the balance. That is a sole source from window repair system, industry standard. The whole region uses, every district uses this particular proprietary piece of equipment. It's the best in the business.
The term, the term district-wide is not meant to be every single building. But if we didn't call it that, we would have to have a separate project approved by the state for each building. But this way, it's like an IT project that's district-wide. It could be in a number of buildings and it qualifies as one project.
And they are.
Have we identified the, the company that's going to do the windows?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
It's called Window Repair System. It should be on the backup information that's there.
But that's not on the, that's not on the secret resolution, that's on the repair resolution.
All right, so.
That's on 7.4, I guess.
Have they done, have, have they done windows for us before?
Yes, they've done all of our window repairs at, at least in the last five years. And even when we went out to bid for Thorin and for Mandela and for Pennington, those contractors used them as well.
So there's no other contractors, I mean, because they're just going to adopt the DEI policy. Now, what type of company is this? Is it a?
What is the name of the company again?
Window Repair System, the mother company is out of South Carolina. And they have satellite areas in all of the eastern states. So they'll have to apply, comply to our DEI policy for sure. And like every other vendor will. So if they don't, then they won't do business with us.
And we have to approve the budget for this.
No, this is, isn't this coming? Is this coming out of the rescue fund?
This is coming out of the general fund under, just under a general repairs budget. So nothing needs to be approved in terms of the budget itself.
So how much is something like this going to cost?
I think it's $299, Michael, $299,000.
So we're doing five schools, hundreds and hundreds of windows. I'll have the exact number of windows, but I didn't think that we needed that for this evening. We have identified five additional schools that we're doing the work in now. We've already done five plus Thorin, plus Pennington, plus Mandela. So those were on project.
I want to say one more thing, that is that there's a possibility that in the end, this could come out of the bond. But right now, we're going to be sending it to the state as coming out of the general fund. But if we find ourselves able to use the bond for this after we meet our obligations under the balance of the bond contingency, we have the ability to switch it to the bond if there's money left over in the bond.
Great.
I have a question, isn't Mandela a new building?
Thank you, thank you, because that was my question. Why were we repairing windows?
We didn't replace the windows in Mandela.
They're saying we're not doing Mandela.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. We did not replace the windows during construction at Mandela. We replaced the hardware in the windows and they were the vendor for that. But when we did the Mandela project, we only identified a certain number of necessary windows at the time. And now we're coming through to finish the building. So it wasn't part of the replacement.
I thought the building was finished, man. Thank you.
Windows.
So, 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 so tonight.
What's, what's the list of schools that's getting their windows replaced?
Yeah, because not everyone is getting it, so you're saying.
Everybody will eventually have this, but right now, we're doing Graham, the remaining windows in Mandela, Trappaggin.
Rebecca Turner?
Rebecca Turner, Trappaggin.
Williams, I hope.
Mandela and Graham.
You're not doing Williams?
Williams, don't think either.
Williams has, we did most of the Williams windows and they have a different type of window. So it's a different type of balance. They, in the new wing, they have the sliding windows like Trappaggin, those were all inspected. So every, eventually, every school will have these, this type of hardware in the windows. It's safe. The reason that we do this is because these windows are sixty, seventy, eighty years old. And the hardware is what goes on them before the sash is actually go. So we're able to replace an entire window would be five times the cost. So able to make the window safe and efficient with just changing the mechanism inside the sashes that help the window go up and down. And what they also do is they meet the new code, which only allows the window to open four inches and comes with an automatic stop on it. So no windows had that. So we had windows that were wide open, windows that were slamming down. Those are all, that's all remediated as part of a bigger window initiative.
Mike, really quick, I got two things. First, how many, some of these windows that are going to be repaired with this emergency, these are windows that are on a repair list on those BCS reports, right?
They are. So what we've done is we've now given this information to KGND so they can cross-reference it from the BCS.
Now, the only other thing is, you know, we got to ask that question about Mandela because the public is on here listening to us say we're repairing windows. And we, we've been saying that that building is complete. And we've done all of this work and spent all of these millions of dollars for a long time now. We reopened that building. We said everything was perfect and beautiful. We got beautiful paint walls and all kinds of handy-dandy flashy-lashy, but yet we didn't finish the, we got windows.
I don't, I don't think I, I'll try it one more time.
No, 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 I don't want you to go into it like that. I just wanted to explain the reason why trustee Red and I just asked the question the way we did because the public is on and they're asking that same question. So you just kind of did it, just wanted to make sure that you, that's the only reason why I was saying.
I want to speak to that for a second, trustee Mitchell. We reached the maximum we were allowed to spend on that building in the renovation of that building. Now we're moving on to take care of things we could not do. We would not have gotten state aid.
The MCA for that building was $18 million. We exceeded that in the construction. Things had to be removed, air conditioned, some repairs. And now we're circling back to tighten it up and to make sure that everything is complete. That's why we're, that's why these things are done.
I guess the building was not completed.
Okay, so, so are we going to move on with this? I'm not.
The other question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm just keeping hearing. Can we just move on from this? We could, we're just going to vote on getting the windows, but I'm not comfortable with the company. Now, so if I say yes to the.
Certain things we're not comfortable with.
I'm not comfortable with the company. So, so how can we move on from this?
But we're just doing a declaration.
Okay.
I don't want to be awarded anything if they didn't pass the DEI.
All right, because we can, we can talk about windows all night. All right, so let's move on from this. We're going to get the windows done, but we need to, we need to move on from this.
Yeah, but what's the conclusion?
If we're talking about DEI right now, every, every vendor, once the DEI policy is in place, will have to comply or they will no longer be allowed to do business in our district. That's been made clear by the superintendent and you folks. And so we're prepared to do that with every.
But Mike, it's not just the DEI. I think it's the, for the opportunity for some of the community to have worked for the district. I think that's the bigger picture. I think that what, what a lot of people in the community want is opportunity to do some work in the district. So it's not only.
Yeah.
We use this company in the past, that doesn't say we have to use them all the time.
For sure. For sure, we don't have to use them ever again.
Yeah, I'm not saying we, we, we're not going to, I'm just saying we need to talk about it.
Of course.
Let's just move on from that, okay? So are we going to vote on the windows? Are we going to vote on the windows?
You have to vote on the secret resolutions for the, for the wall and for the windows.
Okay.
And, and then the, to tell us to go ahead with the project to get these windows done so the windows can be open, which is what we're trying to do to provide more airflow in this, in the COVID environment.
Right.
Right, okay, so I'm fine with that, but we need to talk about who's going to do it. Okay, so we can.
But once we tweet tonight, we already know who's doing it, correct?
You know who's doing these five schools. There's still other window work. And if the board so desires that we go out to bid again, we will do that.
Well, that's a good chance we will, but.
I think that's what the board.
Move on, let's move forward. Let's go. Go ahead.
But we didn't vote on this, so.
No, we need.
But you know what we're saying is that these windows have to be able to open because of COVID. These classrooms have to have some sort of ventilation going through. And we, and we don't vote on at least the windows getting repaired so they can get some ventilation. I know in my daughter's classroom, it's about two windows that can open.
I'm not, I'm not arguing about the windows being fixed. I'm arguing about who's going, how did we come about this company fixing them? That's my question.
So the question to answer that, trustee, is this is the company that has this proprietary piece of equipment. Nobody else sells it. So this is the one that the industry, meaning the entire region, if you go to all of our neighboring districts, both some like ours, some in different parts of the county, and they use this company because of this proprietary.
Call post-communication, please listen as I.
Okay. Is that you, one? Is that you?
I'm sorry, my phone, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, all right, let's go ahead and vote on this.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve the secret resolution for the district-wide window repairs. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain?
I'm going abstain.
Okay, trustee Saunders is abstaining. The motion carries. That brings us to 7.4. This is an emergency declaration for window repairs district-wide. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'm sorry, Rick.
I thought we just did that one.
That was the secret, so that was the environmental part of it.
Oh, Rick, I did an abstain before. I voted aye, it was Madam President abstain.
You abstained, I'm sorry.
No, I voted aye.
I saw on, on 7.3, I have one abstention. Hold on, give me one second, let me go back. On 7.3, I have six yeas and one abstention, and the abstention went to trustee Saunders. Is that correct?
Saunders, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. All right, now we're at 7.4, emergency declaration, windows district-wide. We have a motion by trustee Miller, we're waiting on a second.
Second.
Trustee Saunders. Madam President, do you want to call for questions and comments and discussion here? I don't want to.
Comments, any discussions?
When we say district-wide, once again, will this, this include our beautiful, wonderful, brand-new building, Pennington?
So Pennington, trustee, was, was completed partially during the renovation. And then directly after the renovation, the rest of the windows were done as proprietary. So yes, Pennington is, is complete.
Okay. So Pennington is the only one that's been complete?
No, 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 no. There's many schools that have been completed, completed already. ABES is complete, sorry, the STEAM Academy is complete. We did some work at Benjamin Turner, that's completely, the same work, it's complete. So a lot of the schools are done. Parker, I believe, is either complete or that's the next one.
Mount Vernon High School has all new windows from the energy performance contract.
Right, so the windows, after this, these five, there'll be another couple of schools that we have to attack and, and do window repair, but we'll do it any way you say. We'll go out to bid again, we'll, we'll, we'll challenge their DEI, whatever, whatever it is that the board desires, we'll do.
Excuse me, Mr. Policchio, what is this piece of equipment that they have that nobody else has?
Well, the Turbo 2 balance. So it's, it's just their proprietary balance that creates a weight distribution in the bottom sash of the window that makes it, you know, some of these windows, like in Thorin, for instance, they are 100 pounds. The bottom sash, because they're so large. So a young kid can actually move the up and down with just one finger both ways. And it stops. And it stops at four inches and it has an upper, uh, an upper sash, um, mechanism that locks the upper sash and stops it from dropping. So there are other pieces of equipment that can do window repair. No, nobody's saying that. They're saying that, we're saying that this particular piece of equipment is the industry standard. We went along with it. We've been doing it for a couple of years now with window repair systems. And it's a great product, and we've had great success with it. That, that's the bottom line of it.
Well, Ms. Polisio, I have a question because in the past, you know, there were certain pieces of equipment, say, in elevator or even windows where they get, where they break, and we can't find a replacement because the company's out of business or they, they're the only ones that make it. Well, are we going to have that problem with this company?
No, so that's the thing. They've been in business for a very long time. And like I said, there's an abundance of this now because of the, uh, of, because of everybody using it. Like, a school system uses them or shall use them. It's just a lot.
But are they only ones that, are you, are you saying that the, they're the only ones?
They're the only one that makes the Turbo 2 balance. There are other balances out there, for sure. Nobody's saying it's the only thing that makes a window go up and
So if it breaks, we have to use them. Is that correct?
Or we have to change the balance mechanism in that window to something else.
Well, they hold you hostage to that. Is that right?
I don't believe they hold us hostage to it. I think it's just, uh, uh, there's many things that we have that are proprietary, like by sanitizing equipment is proprietary. So, you know, um, our Apple products are proprietary. You know, there's proprietary stuff out there that we use that's good.
All right. Any other question? All right, uh, Mr. McCormick?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Trustee Saunders, uh, uh, trustee Saunders abstains. All right, motion carries. We need a motion to approve Resolution 7.5 from the Business Office, an emergency declaration for the Mount Vernon High School retaining wall.
Motion.
Motion. Second?
Trustee Miller and trustee Saunders. Questions, comments?
Let's see.
Seeing none. I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, Madam President.
No, I'm just, uh, so we're going to do the retaining wall. Who's going to do this? Did we just go out to bid?
No, this is a repair of a retaining wall. We used FMD. They are our mason. They are our procured bin-winning mason, and I believe their contract goes until September 30th in order for them to comply with DEI.
Okay, all right.
Is this the wall that collapsed with the auditorium?
No. No. Thank the Lord, no. This is a retaining wall in the rear of Mount Vernon High. Keeps water from entering the Stuyvesant, um, Stuyvesant Parkway, Stuyvesant Drive.
Stuyvesant Plaza.
Stuyvesant Plaza, I'm sorry. Stuyvesant Plaza neighborhood. So when this wall was built, it was part of a, a lawsuit back in 2009 that made the school district create this 200 linear foot, um, retention wall. Whoever did it back then did with the wrong size block, no footings, and it just
Oh.
And so we're doing it, uh, a much heavier wall in the piece that collapsed. We're doing 12-inch block, solid block, rebar, and footings down to the frost line.
Okay. Any other questions on 7.5?
Seeing, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. Brings us up to school improvement, number 18, 8.1, authorization to approve school improvement service memorandum, S22-6, dated September 1, 2021. We need a motion. Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Sorenson? Oh, it's turn question, okay. I can't see everybody while I'm, I'm pulling the stuff up, so I'm trying to guess voices. Questions?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, it's quite, my question, I think it's 42 people I counted on there. And what's the total to send 42 people out to, uh, different, uh, cities and?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the second one?
I'm talking, maybe I'm talking about the
That's 9.1.
You're on, you're on 9.1. We're at 8.1 right now. I'm sorry. All right, cool.
The other resolution.
I had it written down wrong. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I do have one question. Um, Dr. BC, is this, um, the, the, um, the consulting on the CTE? This is, this is in addition to the person that we're having who's going to be administering the CTE programs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
This is for the licenses that we want by October. Dr. Bubble to do that, and we need
Thank you. That's great. Thank you very much.
You got that.
Great, great news. Okay. Rick?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. All right, that brings us to 9.1, Student Services, Approval of Student Services Memorandum, Number 4, dated September 1, 2021. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Trustee Saunders, second?
Second.
Trustee White, questions?
I think, uh, trustee Red had a question.
I'm cool. I, I, I figured it out.
Sure?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh, positive.
All right. Go ahead.
Seeing no more questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. That brings us to Superintendent Resolution 11.1, Approval of Superintendent Memorandum, dated 9/1/21.
Motion.
Trustee Saunders?
Second.
Trustee Turnquist? There we go. All those in fa- uh, question, I'm sorry. Questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion carries. All right. Uh, up next is Board of Education Resolution, Acceptance of Minutes from the August 24, 21 meeting.
Motion.
Trustee Miller?
Second.
Second. Second.
Trustee Saunders? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye, sorry, I, I forgot to say aye. I was then aye, aye.
Aye, aye, ayes.
Aye, yes. Sorry.
Roger that. All right, uh, motion carries. Uh, Acceptance of Minutes from the Reorganizational Meeting, dated 7/6.
Motion.
Trustee Red?
I mean, second.
Trustee Mitchell and trustee Red, I'm sorry. All right, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Uh, and 12.3, this is the policy adoption of our diversity, equity, and inclusion DEI policy. Uh, there have been no changes made since the second reading of last week. Do we have
Motion.
Trustee Turnquist, trustee Saunders? Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Madam President, that concludes the resolutions for this evening's board meeting.
Okay. A motion to adjourn?
Uh, Madam, Madam President?
Yes, sir.
May I ask for your indulgence and ask for the board to return to exec for a very brief conversation?
Okay, so we won't be coming back to public?
No, ma'am. And I, uh, just need Jeff with me on, on this one.
Okay, all right, so, um, we can adjourn public session, please? Motion?
I would, uh, we don't need to adjourn. We need to, a motion to enter executive session?
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Saunders, and, uh, what is the purpose, sir?
Uh, to discuss the employment history of a person, persons.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. The board stands in recess for executive session.